The language.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Our first public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on March 26, 2024 at 6:30 PM prior to final action being taken to convey the real property located at 1316 Garrison Street totaling approximately .37 acres parcel ID number 4130200062 to Narrow Gate Development.
There's nobody signed up for that one?
Nobody signed up? Okay. And as we go to the second one, 2017 Bishop Drive.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 26, 2024 at 6:30 PM prior to final action being taken to convey the real property located at 2017 Bishop Drive totaling approximately .35 acres parcel ID number 3551400089 to Charleston Habitat for Humanity.
Nobody signed up?
Thank you, ma'am. Building ordinance revisions.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 26, 2024 at 6:30 PM prior to final action being taken to amend Chapter Four of the Code of Ordinances Charleston County entitled Buildings and Building Regulations and Chapter Eight of the Code of Ordinances Charleston County entitled Fire Prevention and Protection.
Nobody signed up?
Three for three. Okay, so we'll have our public comments period.
We do have four people signed up for public comments. The first person is Angela Singleton, then Jenny Hazel, Denise Fuego.
She did get the notice, right?
Yes, sir. I emailed her.
Okay. Here she comes.
Good evening, everyone. How are you guys?
Good.
Great.
First of all, thank you for having me here. My name is Angela M. Singleton. I live at 3822 Tommasculane, and I'm also a committee member of the Ten Mile Historic Preservation Committee. And I know it was removed from the agenda in reference to George Singleton Estate, but we are opposing the appeal for George Singleton Estate. We want to remain as three. And I also have a question. Can you tell me why it was removed off the agenda?
I'm confused when you say that something was taken off the agenda.
It was removed off the agenda because we were trying to verify some of the facts. And the facts, we weren't able to verify them, so we took them off, took it off the agenda.
So, if I may, y'all are the current owners of the property?
We are the heirs. There's more heirs that are here already, and some are on the way.
But, so, the keeper of the S4, who's wanting the keeper of the S4?
The heirs that are here want to keep the S4. The R4, from what I was told, her name is Meren Pinkney Levy, and I guess she's being advised by Ida Bennett. And there's some other heirs that I would, Ada Bennett, that I was told that they wanted to remain R4. But when I did the S3, I called and asked, one of the heirs had passed away. So I asked, I said, this heir passed away, the taxes are now coming to my sister, and the taxes are going to my brother out of S3. And that's what I did, and I have the documents here. Everything was fine.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that until they get to Street, I agree with you, then they can bring it back after they got all the information, they got a Street.
And we'll make sure everybody knows about it, so we'll have, you will get plenty of notice.
But it remains S3 until, until somebody comes in and says, well, we got the document, it should have been R4.
It should remain R4.
Yeah, it should have remained R4. All we got is a letter saying that they wanted to do it, but we didn't know who owns the property. So until they get to legal family matter Street, I think we just need to wait, and then they can bring it back.
Yes, sir.
To his body.
That's what we're planning to do. That's why we took it off the agenda.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you. Jenny Hazel, Denise Fuego. Did you want to speak first? Please, go ahead. No, no.
Hi, I'm Jenny Hazel. I'm part of the George Singleton Estate. We just want to remain in the three. That community cannot hold four houses on it. If you've ever been in that location to see the historic and how all the houses are, you'll agree. But we, as a whole, like family, and some of our other family that are on the way, we do have an appeal that we're working on. And just like he said, when we get all the facts, we'll be back. Thank you.
Denise Fuego, Katie Zimmerman.
Hello. My name is, oops, Denise Fuego, but thank you. I'm Executive Director of House of Holy City Trex, and my address is 2222 Ashley River Road. The Singleton Estate is a perfect example of how the historic preservation ordinance can be put to work. This is, again, I understand it's heirs' property, and we have to straighten out the heirs' property situation, but this is an area that should be preserved. And we look forward to working on affordable housing, which is intergenerational for the family, as well as wealth preservation for the family as well. So please let me help any way I can to make sure that we have the correct facts and we preserve this family estate for posterity. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last person is Katie Zimmerman.
Katie Zimmerman, Executive Director of Charleston Moves, 478 King Street. I was here for your committee discussion on the comp plan last week and your debate over the transportation element about prioritizing pedestrian infrastructure. And I sent Vice Chairwoman Honeycutt an amendment suggestion to try to get the language tightened up in a way that I think is where everybody could agree we want to go. And I brought hard copies, if you need to look at it, at my suggestion, but what I suggest amending it to be would be prioritize complete streets and bridges by requiring that contextually appropriate pedestrian and bike access be incorporated in all existing and planned public roadway and bridge projects and exploring potential funding sources for additional pedestrian and bike access projects. And I suggest this amendment because it lines up a little better with the state's Complete Streets Engineering Directive and also will help get the right design in the right place. So when we say pedestrian and bike infrastructure in every location, that doesn't necessarily mean a sidewalk and a bike lane. It's all contextual. And so the complete streets approach, it's a process and an approach to street design. There's not a singular design prescription for that. So it's very possible that you could have a rural roadway where the pedestrian infrastructure is a marked shoulder. It wouldn't necessarily be a sidewalk. And so the complete streets language opens it up for you all to know you're getting the right design in the right place and not feeling forced to do something that maybe doesn't make any sense. It also, I kind of laid out, there's a three-pronged approach to that. It's, you're reinforcing the importance of prioritizing vulnerable road users and providing the correct space in every project that protects people as much as possible, offers more people the options to get around by bike foot and waiting for the bus, which is the second highest comment the public gave to the planning staff during this process. And then, of course, balances the safest design with the protection of trees, private property, and drainage, which is going to continue to come up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last one. All right. So we'll start our county council meeting with the prayer by Reverend Middleton and a pledge led by Mr. Brantley Moody.
General Goddard, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you, God, for this county council and for the work of Charleston County Government. We praise you for our chair, this county council, for our administrator, for every individual that works within the confines of Charleston County Council. Thank you, God, for our service workers, and we ask that you continue to protect our men and women in uniform. And we ask, God, your blessings across the board. In the name, in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Freedom of Information Act?
In compliance. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas was posted, distributed to news media, and persons requesting notification.
Thank you. Minutes of March 12, 2024. Moved by Mr. Pryor and seconded by Mr. Moody. Any additions, corrections to be made? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Item three was removed from our agenda, so we'll go to item four, third reading ordinances, building ordinance revisions.
And ordinance amending Chapter Four of the Code of Ordinances Charleston County entitled Buildings and Building Regulations and Chapter Eight of the Code of Ordinances Charleston County entitled Fire Prevention and Protection. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sacks?
Aye.
The ordinance has passed third reading with nine ayes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Pryor.
I would recommend that we pass 5A through 5L with the right to amend up the third reading, but if you had, which one you have an amendment on?
B and J. Okay. Okay, but I would like to take K out for discussion.
Five A, five D, five E, five F, five H, and five L, I believe, all in one.
Also five C.
All in one, and five C. Okay.
Yes. All, I'm moved that we.
People had voted against five C in committee. That's why I didn't include.
Okay, so we're not, we're not doing five C. We'll go back and do five C. So we're going to do five A, five D, five E, five F, five H, and that will be it on this one.
Mr. Chairman, can we take out the transportation element to discuss what Mrs. Zimmerman just raised?
Already excluded.
Thank you.
Let me do that. Yes, ma'am. Okay, let's just do them one at a time.
Move for approval on five A.
And seconded for five A. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Third reading. Yes, sir. With the right to, all of these, to amend up the third reading. Is she going to read all?
Mr. Boykin?
Five B?
Yes, sir. I move that the density range recommendations for the Wildemaw Island agricultural preservation, agricultural preservation, and rural agricultural future land use categories not be changed as recommended by the Planning Public Works Committee, and that at least 50% of the total site area be required to be delineated as a conservation area pursuant to the Zeldar Conservation Area requirements in order to gain additional density through the plan development process up to the maximum density recommended for each of the three future land use categories with right to amend the third reading.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jenny.
Hi, Jenny.
I would like to make sure that, I didn't hear it in the motion, that these, the open space in this, is this the same one, Joe, about the open space?
It is.
Fifty percent?
Yes.
That that be defined the way we define it in the conservation districts.
That is in the motion.
Great. And just so the rest of council understands, Joe and I discussed this, and obviously, any plan development that comes before the Planning Commission will have challenges in succeeding by virtue of the process, but I think this actually would promote the preservation, the healthy preservation of land, and I think landowners are agreeable to this, so I support this amendment. But thank you, Mr. Boykin.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this one? Mr. Kowalski?
I just need some clarification. I thank Joe for coming up with a way to preserve land. I think, again, the follow-up from last week, this is a huge thing. We don't know what's going to happen with 526. If it does pass, there's going to be tremendous pressures for development on these rural areas. And just, and as somebody who's lived here for, like, forty-five years? Forty-four years, not on county council, I've seen everything, kind of rural areas erode. I always wondered how it happened. And developers look ten, twenty years out, and there's never anybody looking to preserve it looking ten, twenty years out. We have a historic opportunity anticipating all the growth that's happened in Johns Island and East Cooper that I've seen in my lifetime to try to anticipate and do the right thing. And we'll be judged long after we're no longer on this council, the people that live here, whether rural areas are preserved or not. So I'm cautious, Joe, though. I appreciate, and I think this is great. For my, I think I'd rather just do what the Planning Commission wanted, if we can pass that. And as a fallback, if we can't, what you're suggesting is better, but I still want to reduce the density in plan developments in the future as much as humanly possible, because, again, I understand what happened 24, 28 years ago, whenever that was, but so much has changed. The world and the rural areas of Charleston County are in danger of disappearing every day, and I feel that I want to, to the extent humanly possible, preserve it and not allow for plan developments to the extent that we can reduce that in size. So I think the Planning Commission's proposal was good, and I would support theirs if we can accomplish that. For the reasons I said, planning for the future, and we'll be judged by history and future generations how we approach this.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Boykin?
In response, Mr. Kowalski, I appreciate your comments. I certainly want to preserve land as much as anyone else, but I was moved by Ms. Honeycutt's point that she made, that this was a bargain struck 26 years ago between the landowners, and they gave up value in their property by agreeing to give up the one unit per acre. So that's not to be overlooked. And I think, I thank Ms. Honeycutt for working with me. I think we've got a fair bargain that preserves those property rights, but also preserves land at the same time.
Responds, saying this is about the future, not the past, and we'll be judged by future generations in how we preserve and do what developers have always done and have inside information, looking to the future, developing our rural areas. We have a chance now to look ahead and preserve those rural areas so they don't disappear from our history and what a lot of people love and identify with Charleston County and especially in my district. This, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Anyone else? Mr. Werman?
Can I just make maybe a point of clarification? This is really a question, just to make sure I understand this, but, and I don't want to diminish what's at stake here. I think that whether something comes with the recommendation or not, it can have a huge impact. But am I understanding that this would affect PD applications? The PD application would come to council regardless. What it really is at stake is whether there's a provision that would basically prohibit it from getting a recommendation of approval from staff or not. Is that sort of, does that lay the issue on the table in a fairly accurate way?
Ms. Honeycutt?
Yes, that's Mr. Joe. He's the man in charge.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Evans, but I think that would sort of help clarify where we're at, because I don't want there to be some indication that we're giving some by right ability to go super dense in these areas. And I think that it would be helpful to clarify that I think I'm correct in assuming that's not the case.
So with the Planning Commission's recommendation, if that higher density range was taken out and someone applied for a plan development with a higher zoning than what the underlying zoning district would be, then staff would point out that it would not be consistent with the comp plan. It's not as absolute as in every single case, we would recommend disapproval, but that would be one aspect of the comp plan that they would not be consistent with.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What we'd be voting on, so, we vote for the motion, if we vote against the motion, what is the result?
The motion, if I read it correctly, is it allows, with a plan development, it allows a bonus density in that area, but you have to have 50%, 50% conserved open area, and we can use that as buffer for between this area and the settlement areas and other things like that as well.
I understand. In this procedure, can I make a motion to in favor of the Planning Commission?
There's already a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Moody?
Thank you.
Let's have a vote. Mr. Kowalski, from your standpoint, it's better than it was. I would take it and move on Mr. Pryor's advice. You liked that before. I think it's better than where it was when it got here, so I would take it and roll.
And I'd like to add that we do have a tremendous opportunity to add green space over there. We're going to have a lot more green belt money, and that is a wonderful place to add some more green space, as much as we can. So I think that that's a big opportunity. We need to, hopefully residents will take advantage of that. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? One opposed. Five C, economic development element.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Reverend Middleton, seconded by Mr. Pryor. Any discussion?
What's the amendment Mr. Moody added?
Right.
Yes. Any recommendation?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Five D, move to approve?
Second.
Five D moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
To approve?
Second.
Five E, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Five F, population element.
Move for approval, committee recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Moody and Reverend Middleton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Five G, housing element.
Move for committee recommendation.
So, Mr. Chair, just before moving for that committee recommendation, five G, because there was still some degree of unreadiness, and it seemed like there was some, well, Mr. Werman still had some, you know, he made some valid points on last week. I would ask, if possible, and I'm just asking, five GK, and I do know that five H, Ms. Zimmerman just read language that she had shared with Ms. Honeycutt. We have not seen it. I would ask that we defer, just, I'm just asking for a deferral, of five GH and K, adding that energy element piece in there, so that we can relook at those craft language in consultation with council members, so that we might be able to come here and have a more united understanding of what we're voting on, just like Ms. Honeycutt and Mr. Boykin were able to get together on 3.1. I would like for us really to have that fair opportunity to do that, and if it doesn't, if it's voted down once we come back, you know, after having that opportunity, then that's fair enough. But I would ask for us to defer five GH and K for language edits.
If that's a motion, I'll second it, Mr. Middleton.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I guess I need to withdraw my motion. First of all, I withdraw.
As a point of clarification, what does the comp plan have, do these recommendations all need to be approved by third reading at the same time? In other words, can we approve some of these through third reading and then not others that were delayed?
A brief conversation about this before, saying that we wanted to, we did recognize that we had up to third reading, you know, on all of these to amend. We wanted to at least get the initial ground foundational language right, you know, on this first, you know, at least request, so that as it moves up, then surely, you know, it can be parsed. But we still wanted to have that opportunity to amend the language before even sending it up for further amendments up to third reading.
I understand that, but does that delay the rest of the amendments that we've passed tonight from progressing forward?
These one is on the own.
Yeah. We will manage to bring them all up for the third reading at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can delay third reading. You can delay third reading.
So we have a motion, it's been moved and seconded, to defer five EH and K?
Five GH and K.
GH and K. Not E, okay, G. Okay, GH, yeah. Mr. Moody? Do you have a question?
I guess I was going to ask Ms. Hamm, just, Jenny, Ms. Honeycutt may have already asked the same thing, but is there a timeframe that this all has to be approved, or Mr. Evans, or Mr. Tooton, or somebody? Is there a timeframe that we're under?
The state outlines that, they're, I'm sorry. And the state outlines a five-year review and a 10-year update, so the idea is that we try to keep with that schedule as much as possible.
Might I suggest, I don't want to change the motion or anything, but let's keep a tight timeline. We've been deferring a lot of stuff the last couple of weeks. We got stuff everywhere.
I would be prepared to bring the language. Ms. Zimmerman just read language. We just need to have a copy of that. We just don't have it right now, so we just need, you know, that in front of us. The language that we're talking about, we'll get together in short order and work on that, and so we can have that back by, you know, you tell us.
We ought to be able to have that back by the next committee meeting and the following Tuesday after that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, hang on a second. I guess Ms. Salisbury, just a point of where we are here, so this has already gone through committee meeting, so I guess I need to understand how we're, I'm tired of deferring stuff.
Sure.
So I want to make sure we keep things moving along.
Sure. I think if you defer it tonight, Mr. Middleton has said he thinks that we could bring something back to the next Planning and Public Works Committee.
So why would it, I may interrupt you if you don't mind, why would it have to go back through Planning and Public Works? Why couldn't it just come back to us for the changes?
I think, I think it could. I think, not putting words in Mr. Middleton's mouth, but I think he's looking for y'all to have some discussion and get on the same page about the wording that you, that you passed before it comes to county council.
Okay, I get that, and that would be fine, because that is the forum for discussion, and that's fine. I guess I want to make sure this is back before us at our next council meeting would be my, would be my request. If we, if the path of that takes it through Planning and Public Works next week, I'm fine with that, too, because that is the forum for most of discussion. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then in my mind, we would right-time these to get third reading all at the same time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pryor?
You can always delay third reading to make sure all these come back at the same time, so you don't have to be in a super race, because you can just move third reading to a later date to allow you to bring all this back at the same time. So just wanted to throw that out for Ms. Honeycutt, when she asked the question, yes, if you want to pass them all at the same time, you just delay third reading for these to catch up on second reading, and then everything to have the third reading at the same time.
Okay. Mr. Boykin, do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry. Anybody else?
Just, no comments, but I want to make sure, it's a lot of talk, which ones we're voting on and which ones we're not.
GH and K.
GH and K. Thank you.
For those? Okay. So the vote is to defer GH and K.
All right, thank you.
And no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, next one.[1667.57]
Is that aye?
Aye. Mr. Boykin?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 5J, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, excuse me, I'm waiting for J.
I'm sorry, it's J. I'm sorry. 5I, community facilities element.
5 India, moved for committee recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now we get to 5J. 5J, Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the conservation subdivisions continue to be allowed in the AG8 zoning district, instead of removing them from the AG8 zoning district as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moved by Mr. Boykin, seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. Any discussion?
Amendment?
Is this tied to?
Oh, it's amendment, yes.
We voted on an amendment first.
Yes, yes.
Now, what does that mean, Joe? What is the significance of that change?
Mr. Kabrowski, right now, AG8 zoning areas is a conservation subdivision allowed. That basically requires 50% of the property to be put in a, in easement or protected area, and that the houses would be clustered on the other 50% of the property, and they would, they get, I think, I think double the density for dwelling units. And so that basically allows them to do it by right, which has been the case for a long time now. Very few times have that's been actually used, and this would just simply leave it in there as another tool for conservation and development, working in hand in hand. So they can either do it by the PD route, which goes through the Planning Commission, or they can do it through the conservation subdivision. So they both kind of wind up at the same ending, and Mr. Evans could comment if you have any more questions on that.
But I'm just trying to understand the change you're proposing, changing from what to what.
The Planning Commission recommended striking the conservation subdivision out of the ordinance, and I'm fine with it staying in there.
What would be the reason to strike it out?
Because they were going to eliminate the bonus densities altogether, so if you were to take away the table that was originally proposed, it would make sense to take this out as well. But since the table's not being removed, leaving it in is fine.
Then, for point of discussion, every day I go on the cross-town to where I work, and I've seen all the huge, big box buildings in Charleston, we've made the same deal with housing. In other words, developers can build up and out if they put some amount of fair housing in, and I see this in the same thing. I'm, would be against increased density, so I understand what you said, so I'm trying, my thing is, increased density, I think they have a point in what they said, as you explained it, you know, because I feel that the increased density will always be used, and I've seen it happen in Charleston. Now we have up and out, and we're like turning the Jersey City are herboken because of these same things where developers get the right to build up and out and increase the density on the trade-offs. So I think the Planning Commission had a point, and I'd not be in favor of increasing the bonus points for density to give them, to put more congestion. We're about to vote on a referendum on the sales tax because of all the transportation needs and congestion and traffic, and to allow for increased density at the same time, we're asking people to spend $5.3 billion, I think is the wrong direction, and as you explained, which I appreciate you going through.
If I make, I'm sorry.
It's like the other one, it's better than it was when it came out of Planning Commission for you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Boykin?
I'm not bad.
In public works.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question, sir. Is Rod Serling here? I mean, I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. I don't know what's going on. I'm just confused.
Welcome to the club.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't, I don't know, I don't even know what to argue, for or against. I just don't know. I need something of a, more of a simplistic means of explaining to me, particularly for the areas that you said you wanted to protect, and then for the area for Ms. Honeycutt, for those who have made an agreement of sorts, so that they would not lose. I just, I'm lost.
Mr. Chair, can they put this card up?
Mr. Darby, if I may, this is Ms. Honeycutt.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the confusion here is that the Planning Commission struck this provision in order for, to require people to go through the PD process in order to give up half their land, when there was a perfectly good process by virtue of the conservation subdivision in place. So having read that plan and discussed with staff, we were like, why are we taking this out? And so, again, having spoken with Mr. Boykin, who is primarily rural constituents, I felt, he and I both felt it would be appropriate, not only for AG8, but, you know, if it were necessary elsewhere. We are using, in the amendment we made earlier, the definition of the conservation subdivision for the AG15 language, and so we, we need to keep it in there in order to use its definitions, or we'll lose that. So I apologize. You kind of had to get into the weeds of looking at the Planning Commission's revisions, and so I had constituents approach me about it, and I think Mr. Boykin had some approach him, and so that's why we've been working so diligently on this.
Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Any further discussion?
This, one final question.
Mr. Kabrowski, one more question.
Joe, this would increase the density and the allowed development. Is that not true?
It won't increase it any more than what the Plan Development Process allows. They're the same, it's just two different routes to get there. They both have to conserve at least 50% of the property. One, and then in the conservation subdivision, they have to cluster all the homes together.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is this going, it's a question, is this going to devalue these folks' property by what we doing there? Or is it going to increase the value? Because, you know, land is a value. So by us striking this and not allowing them to do certain things, is that going to decrease their value if they want to sell?
Mr. Chair, may I respond? It's not going to change anything. They still can cut out the same number of lots as allowed by their zoning, and they can still get all the houses that they're entitled to. All it does is it allows them to set aside a portion of the property to be conserved.
But is that, that would be a mandate, not a volunteer?
They would have to meet that requirement under the Plan Development Process, and they have to, they, this, they have.
They are giving up something. What they're giving up could possibly have been developed.
Well, they can't, they, they can only put so many houses on there by right. So all we're doing is encouraging them through this to put the houses in one area and conserve open space. They still get the same houses, sell for the same amount of money, the same way. I mean, you know, they get the full development rights that they have otherwise. It just.
And all would be in one cluster, and the other half would conserve, which is saying.
Yes, sir. And then, and then areas where it joins settlement communities, that would be a great tool, that they could use that undeveloped land to be what borders the settlement area, to give them some setback and some buffer from a neighborhood encroaching upon it.
Mr. Werman?
Yeah, I, so I think that this pretty well undermines the comment I made when we were discussing it in the land use settlement context, if there is an alternative route to doing the exact same thing by right. So, you know, I will say, and I apologize for not piecing those, those pieces of the puzzle together initially, but, but, you know, that did give me some comfort. I'll, I can support this to move it forward, also partly because the land use element won't make sense if we don't do it, and it would require some reengineering of that element. But, but I, I guess I do have some reservations that I might look at this a little closer on second reading, but I do think, you know, I know that you and Councilwoman Honeycutt have worked hard on this, and I understand, I think generally, what's going on here, but it does seem like there is a by right, basically, way of doing the same thing that we just discussed under the land use element, which, which does raise some concerns for me.
Thank you. Any further, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm gonna have to go know on this one until I get some more information.
Okay. So, did you get that, Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Okay. Next one.
Moved to approve, 5L.
Say.
We're doing 5J now, right?
5L, L as in Larry?
That was J.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Coordinate, yeah, okay, 5L, thank you. 5L.
Moved to approve.
Moved, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
An ordinance approving the amendment of the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan text and maps provisions to implement the five-year review.
Thank you. Next one, committee recommendations with first reading ordinances.
Second.
That's increase 911 wireline fee to 60 cents.
Yes, sir.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
An ordinance amending those portions of Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 2, Section 2-137, dealing with fees.
Thank you.
Chairman, approval for 7A through G.
Second.
Okay, move for 7A through G, Mr. Pryor and Mr. Middleton. Mr. Moody, I'm sorry, any discussion about any one of these?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jenny. Item 7C, I just wanted to thank council and our transportation staff. This is an incredibly unsafe intersection, and this compact urban roundabout will be a huge improvement. The county has also been willing to relocate the historic stone posts that are at that intersection, and so we really appreciate, I know James Island residents are very grateful for the work that's been put into this. We look forward to seeing this project come to fruition.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Number eight, Finance Committee Recommendations, Energy Consultant for Measurement and Verification Services. Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Reverend Middleton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number eight, B, Returning of ERAP Funds to U.S. Treasury.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Boykin. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Do we got to return the interest, too? Or we get to keep it? You don't have to answer that.
Any answer to that one?
You don't have to answer that.
Okay.
Okay, good, good.
Next one is Boards and Commissions.
9A through I.
Thank you.
Approved 9A through I, moved and seconded. Moved by Reverend Middleton, seconded by Mr. Pryor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, we're gonna disband county council, but we're gonna have council comments first. So, how about you, Mr. Werman? Why don't you start off?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Chairman. I think, yeah, I'm, yeah, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Pryor?
I'm good for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Boykin?
Just want to extend my thought and prayers to the Victorson families of the Francis Scott Key Bridge Incident.
Ms. Honeycutt?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Middleton.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. You reminded me through your text for me to be short and brief, so nothing tonight.
I got that loud and clear. I hope it was short and brief enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Two things, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Salisbury, thank you for getting the scheduling straight as far as our referendum deadlines.
Yes, sir.
I believe that has us meeting on August 13th, and the deadline is August 15th.
Too tight.
That's cutting it way too close. I would, I would challenge Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tooton staff to maybe back that up a month. That way, we, if we've, if something slips, if we, you know, whatever, we cannot have this third reading two days before it's due to the Election Commission. Absolutely not. So at least a month earlier, I think, is what we need to shoot for. And the other, just a kind of a praise and thank you to Mr. Tooton and our ombudsman, Mr. Tracus. I know we all have homeowners in our districts who let their houses fall into terrible disrepair. I have a gentleman that's got a home in Springfield that's been written 10, 12 tickets. It's almost $7,000 bucks. He doesn't show up to court, he doesn't repay his tickets, and we have got to find a way to bring some of these people into compliance. It's a shame that our neighbors and our constituents have to look at this mess, and so I told Ms. Hamm and Mr. Tooton, I want us to have a process that's equitable, that's repeatable, that's, you know, flexible to let people get their affairs in order, but we cannot let things like this go on. Our neighbors, our constituents should, do not deserve to look at this, and by whatever means possible, whether it's jail time from our magistrates, or, you know, that may be too far gone, maybe this guy's ready for it, but, you know, the neighbors, this has been going on for a decade in Springfield. It's terrible, and we have got to find a way to enforce our ordinances and put teeth in them and make people come into compliance. So I would, I would like to see something sooner rather than later about how we're gonna make this uniform and repeatable and enforceable. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Darby?
Ditto to Mr. Boykin's comments, sir.
Mr. Kabrowski?
I just want to thank Joe, though, for making the measures better. I mean, as Mr. Moody said, they were better than they were before, and I thought you made progress in that, and their communities were better served as a result of what you did. My vote and my concern was, as I said, that I ran to help preserve what we have left in the rural parts and what people love about Charleston, and I could, I saw it as a historic opportunity to look to the future, not the past, and try to reduce density. Everybody was in McLeanville yesterday, and as I drive out there, reminded again, we had people from 10 Mile, that, again, that's, the development has gone out, the Park West, Carolina Park, the next thing is 10 Mile, and if 526 does pass, none of us know, there's going to be such tremendous development pressures in all, especially in your area, and as the Northern Round Pleasant continues. So my vote was to use this as a historic opportunity to try to reduce the density in the future for our rural areas, and I would not miss an opportunity, so that's why I voted against it, but I do recognize that you improved it from what was there, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Hamm?
No, sir.
I want to thank everybody. Good meeting tonight. We've had a lot to digest the last couple of weeks, and we've got more to do. Thank you all. We're gonna disband county council for our HR committee, headed by Mr. Werman.
Thanks, Chairman. So this will be the Human Resources Committee for March 26th. I chair the committee. Councilman Boykin, Councilwoman Honeycutt, and Councilman Pryor sit on the committee, and of course Chairman Sasse sits on all committees. First item on the agenda is minutes of March 7th.
Move for approval.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
The minutes are approved. Commendations to the clerk, as always. Our second item on the agenda, we have need for an executive session to discuss our county administrator's contract.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We are entering into executive session. Opposed? Hearing none. We are entering into executive session. Mr. Darby? All right, I think, well, yes, I think we've got a quorum here. So we went into executive session, no votes were taken, no decisions were made. I believe that concludes the need for our housing, our, sorry, our human resources.
Three of us wrong.
Special committee. Thank you.
I just need you to adjourn the county council meeting.
Okay. Are we ready to adjourn?
This is adjourned.
Thank you. I'd like, need you to adjourn this county council meeting.